The meeting to order. All the board members are present, stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under.
Any updates or changes for the agenda?
I'll make a motion we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Chairman, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
At this time, I'd like to point out two retirements, Rick Engler, who was some driver's training and ended up as a, by a teacher at Eagleview, and Becky Wolf, who I hate to see go, but I had her for a student, so how could she retire from school?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Policy committee.
The only, just updating to match MSBA's wording, deleting a form that is no longer needed by paper, it's online, and the wellness.
It took my space out of the social internet use.
With Twitter, replace with Twitter. And then the wellness, we're sticking to New Prague's version, because Kim Francis is more detailed and stricter than the MSBA.
Alright, thank you. Southwest Metro?
Southwest Metro had their monthly meeting last Tuesday. It was just a regular meeting, nothing out of the ordinary. We did have a nice report from the new beginnings program, which is a program for young women who are either pregnant or have young children while they're still trying to finish up school. And we had two of the people that went through the program, and they came and spoke to us and talked so highly of that program and how impactful it was on their life. And one of them is attending college now, and one of them is in a vocational program. And they both thanked the board for sponsoring that program and how much it has meant to them.
CPAC?
No meeting at this time.
Danny, any news on adding a school yet? Is that gone anywhere?
I believe that it's a
It's done deal, not going to.
Kind of a resolve that it's not going to happen at this time.
Okay, because last time you weren't sure, I guess.
I believe the consensus is that it won't happen.
Okay, thanks.
Community Ed?
Community Ed, couple of notes. Over eleven thousand catalogs have been mailed out for the summer session. Just last week and part of the week before, the Arts Council and the Community Ed sponsored, co-sponsored the annual art show at the library. Both shows are complete and were highly successful and well-attended. Twenty-nine students competed in the math masters at Belle Plaine last Friday, and they got third place. They were under Jody Perkel. Approximately 275 children participated in the annual egg hunt at Elko New Market. Summer Kids Company currently has 143 at Eagleview and 197 at Raven Stream, which is a total of 340. Last year, the final total was 327, so it's already ahead of that. The most popular registrations, of course, are driver's training, star-struck, star-struck performing arts camp, camp kindergarten, rookie in kindergarten tee ball, recreational soccer, and kid cooking camp. Swimming lessons have received 400 registrations to date so far, and there's 160 scheduled sessions. The New Prague Joint Powers Board continues to meet monthly at the Aquatic Center. A Joint Powers Board, and details are being finalized, and we should hear a report on that tonight. And preschool has 291 registered for next year. There are still 41 slots available.
Thank you. Wellness, did they?
No meeting.
Early childhood?
No meeting.
Alright. Superintendent Report?
Before you start, I want to congratulate you on a great program yesterday, and Tony Boothie and the rest of the gang that set that up. It was, I just thought it was a great activity and fun to tour the building.
Yeah, it was really a neat event. Back, you know, when the bond referendum, when we knew we were going to demolition the 23 building, the district I used to be at was doing something similar to that, what we did, did it a little differently. But at that time, I told Tony, you're going to be in charge of this, and so start planning. So Tony did a fabulous job, Tony Boothie and Julia Schmitz deserve a lot of credit, working with the historical society, mainly Dennis Dvorak. And so they've been working on this for a long time, and it was a nice, well-attended. At 12 o'clock, it was supposed to start at 2, but at 12 o'clock, we had, I think, 25 people standing outside the doors ready to come in. So there's a sort of a mix-up on the time, but that was fine. Actually, it turned out perfect. And yeah, it was just a neat, we had great speakers and great display, and gave people one last chance to go through that. So yeah, we're really pleased about it. And like I said, we're going to take the bricks that form the, or the facade that has New Prague High School in the front, that's going to be on our wall over here, and then we're taking a look at selling the bricks of the building. And more details will be coming on that. So yeah, I couldn't have been more pleased, but again, they deserve the credit for organizing that. And it was a good last-chance look at the, a lot of history there, a lot of good memories. And it was fun to connect with all the people that were, that were there. Okay, also, besides that, upcoming, just want to mention our pops concert Thursday evening, and two shows. And that, it will fill up, so we'll get there early, and that's always one of the great events of the year. And then also, make sure you have on your calendars, May 17th, we have our retiree program. It'll start at 4 o'clock, social hour. It's at Next Chapter Winery, and the program will begin at 5 o'clock. So we have got 12 staff members that will be retiring.
Right. Health insurance renewal.
Two weeks ago, I updated you on where we were at with our health insurance renewal for the next year or two, and just gave you a brief update that the teachers are going to be voting on going self-insurance with Medica, fully insured Medica or staying with the co-op. And we got the results, and the teachers are going to be, or the district will be going self-insured as long as the board approves it tonight. And I have Julia Kindy and Jeff Azin from Gallagher, Arthur J. Gallagher Benefits, to just explain the process to you. There was a one-page handout that you just got. We will put that handout on board docs tomorrow morning. And because it was very late and getting the news about 4:30, something like that. So have them explain it and then give you an opportunity to ask questions.
Sandy, do you know if the teachers are pretty accepting of it, or how the vote went, or don't they?
I was 65% voted for it.
There still were some, okay.
Yep.
Might be easier if we stand. Just a little background. First of all, reintroduce myself. Jeff Azin is Julia Kindy. We are with Gallagher Benefit Services. I've had the pleasure of working with the district the last eighteen, eight years. And actually, I think it's longer than that, but in terms of this tandem of team, we've been working with you for eight years. And so, little background information, you can.
My name is Julia Kindy, and as Jeff mentioned, I've worked with the city, the benefit community for several years. Have done quite a few meetings where we've talked about self-insuring your medical plan and what that means. I feel like there's a lot of education that went into this decision recommendation, and I'll give it back to Jeff.
Yeah, basically, over the last five years primarily, there's been open discussion about whether to continue to utilize the Service Cooperative, which is a plan for public sector, school districts. And the renewal, or actually, the response to the RFP was at 12.9%, which actually was fairly appropriate renewal, and certainly not one that you'd necessarily like to hear. Through the RFP, though, Medica came in on a fully insured basis as well as a self-insured proposal. The committee also looked at the P proposal, Public Employees Insurance Plan, and some of the details are in the summary or executive summary that we provided. After discussion and best offer responses from Medica and the Service Cooperative, all responding entities were asked to provide a best proposal. The only ones that modified their proposals, and were actually the two best proposals to start with, was the Service Cooperative and Medica. So after the benefit committee looked at the final results, they made a recommendation that the district go self-insured through Medica, which is quite a substantial change, because you've been with Blue Cross Blue Shield for quite some time. But in spite of that, and with recognition that the networks, both Medica's network, Open Access Network, as well as Blue Cross Blue Shield's Open Access Network are very large and almost identical. The area that occasionally we find where there's not identical match is in chiropractic services and behavioral health, mental health, and chemical dependency services. So they're not identical, but they are very large. So because of that, we also wanted to have the teachers not only vote in terms of considering a self-insured proposal, but also considering the change to Medica. Because any change, you know, for most individuals, they prefer not to have to deal with change in our lives, given how complex our lives are nowadays. But we wanted to really give the teachers an opportunity to think through this process. So while the recommendation was to go self-insured with Medica, there were really three options that the teachers voted on. Fully insured through the Service Cooperative, in other words, retaining the Service Cooperative and Blue Cross Blue Shield, looking at Medica on a fully insured basis, and looking at Medica on a self-insured basis. Explain some of the network choices to their part of this decision.
I was going to ask, did teachers, did anyone have, are they going to be forced to change doctors, or?
There will be a choice. So employees, as Jeff mentioned, under the Medica plan, the first plan that they have is the Passport, Medica's Passport Network, which is their largest network. It's an open access network, and they have access to almost every provider within the state of Minnesota, and nationally, there's the United Healthcare Network. So there's a very large, extensive network. We also did look at, as a way for employees to save on employee premiums, we will be introducing three narrower network options. Medica offers narrower network, the ACO or Accountable Care Organization Plan types. One is a Vantage Plus, one is a Park Nicollet Only, and then Ridge View. So there's three narrower network plans that employees can choose from. And then if they choose to enroll in one of those three plans, again, they get a lower employee premium, but then they will work within that network to make sure that their providers are included in those networks. So again, they have choice, and lots of choice, and then also some additional choices, so.
We're very optimistic that once the details of these alternative networks are presented to the teachers, that at least for a number of them, they're likely to make that choice. Because it works from a budgeting standpoint, as well as not restricting them significantly. So personally, as an example, I use Park Nicollet for all of my care, and as does my wife. Therefore, for us, we would want to put some of those savings opportunity into our wallets, and would be more than comfortable being limited to just using the Park Nicollet care system. Other questions?
Would they still have an option if, on any given time, that doctor wasn't available, that they can go somewhere else for care? If they, if something happened where that doctor was not available, or?
Under, under an ACO model, you would receive all of your care with your primary care provider. And if you need to be referred out to a specialist, you would always be, you would always have that opportunity. So you're never restricted within the care that you can receive.
Any other questions? Thank you.
No, no, I was just going to say, I'm ready to approve. I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the plan.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staffing.
Okay, basically, I forgot the PowerPoint here. Okay, very good. Okay, Tim and I have been working with the principals and other directors as far as what our staffing plans are for next year for budgeting purposes. A month from tonight, I will be giving you the preliminary budget for 1718. So this will go into that, into that budget. First of all, for the elementary schools, based on the current K enrollment and the rollover into next year, right now, we see a decrease of FTEs. Raven Stream would go down one FTE, Falcon Ridge would go down three FTEs, and Eagleview would actually increase at FTEs. Two classroom teachers, but also their specialists have been a point eight since we did the last boundary change. What was that, seven, six, seven years ago? I forget. They have been a point eight. And really, their enrollment is no different right now than Falcon Ridge's, and their elementary specialists are full-time. And there are a couple of periods that they won't, won't have classes, however, then they're utilized in other ways to help support classroom teachers and so forth. So it really was an equity issue. And so we would have to increase their FTEs by point seven to get all their specialists to full-time. And so the net decrease is 1.3 FTEs.
And I would just like to mention too, Falcon Ridge and Eagleview, the boundary, they were about 140 students different before we did the boundary change. And that boundary change took, Falcon Ridge, at one time, was almost 650, but let's just say 640 at the end of last year. And Eagleview was 505, but probably at the start of next year, we're projecting both to be at about 600. So the boundary change, I just want to, even though we're talking about staffing here, the boundary change has balanced both of those schools very nicely.
And one of those decreases in FTEs, I mean, sometimes the FTEs, it's just how the numbers fall out. But one of those decreases at Falcon Ridge really is due to the change in class size guidelines that we had, that Tim had discussed two weeks ago. So there is a little bit of impact from that increase in class sizes of one for the elementaries. We still will have several classes below, just below the guideline. Sometimes you get those that are right on the edge. And if you, if you take away a section, all of a sudden, you've got class sizes of 30. And if you keep the sections the same, then you've got class sizes just under the guideline. With the three elementary schools, that happens. It's not like we have a, you know, one big elementary that you can, you know, spread classes out. So that just happens sometimes.
And I would also say the elementary, this is, again, like Sandy has there, that it may increase. In fact, some of them, even the one she's talking about, Falcon Ridge, you know, we get a few more students in that grade level. We'll have to add staffing, so we just have to closely monitor it.
Right. We closely monitor over the summertime and kind of see where it ends up. But this will be in the initial plan, in the budget that I presented in May. Middle school, the fifth grade is very large, coming in next, the fifth grade to sixth grade. That's one of the reasons why it's decreasing at the elementary schools as well, but, or decreasing at the elementary schools. But we've got adding a 1.0 at the sixth grade core, but we are going to be decreasing FIED, so the net increase is only 0.33. High school, there is a bunch going on at the high school and the ALC. But the net increase is a 0.41 FTE at the high school. That 0.41 FTE can change somewhat, whether it's considered an overload for a teacher versus if we hire another teacher. So that 0.41 is based on sections. And we are going to be, Lonnie's recommending we increase the dean of students. Right now, the dean of students at 0.17. The dean of students does two sections of RTI, and really asking to increase the dean of students to be a full-time dean of students with the extra, just with the workload at the high school. It's pretty large. Increasing two sections of FIED based on, based on registration in classes. Increasing four sections in industrial ed, industrial ed, but there's actually no increase to budget, because our current teacher is a 0.75, but very highly paid, and our new teacher coming in will be a 1.0, but they will be paid a lot less, so that is actually not a budget increase. Going up three sections in math, two sections in science, and four sections in world language, or minus four sections in world language. I talked to you about that a couple of weeks ago. That resulted in the ULA. So a net increase of 0.41 FTE at the high school, but a net decrease of 0.33 at the ALC. So it's essentially, you know, flat, actually just increasing one section between the high school and the ALC.
What's the ALC registration for next year proposed?
You know, we don't have specific numbers. It's always around between 35 to 40. That's typically what it's been. Our ALC does not, has not been breaking even. We've been trying to do a few different things to try to make that break even. And one of the things here is to decrease our FTEs there. And then special education, adding a 1.0 psychologist and a 1.0 speech pathologist due to large caseloads. Amy did a very good job researching and analyzing, and basically, our psychs and our speech paths have extremely high caseloads, and I don't know if Tim, you want to comment on that at all. I didn't meet directly with Amy, but we definitely have very large caseloads and felt the need to increase those FTEs.
Yeah, she was very concerned about it, and it wasn't like it stemmed from any complaints from any of our staff members. But just to be able to do a good job and do what's right for kids, and also, obviously, it'll alleviate some of the pressure to get some of the things done. They were getting behind on things, so she did a.
Is that covered by state specific funds for those?
Yeah, with the new funding formula, that's a, it's a, it's a very unfortunate situation. But right now, there is a cap as to how much funding can increase from year to year by district. And so while eventually it'll catch up, this year and next year, we're going to be over our cap, and so we don't get any new funding. Very unfortunate, the new special ed formula that they passed, I don't know, three or four years ago, is hurting a lot of districts. I heard, I've heard some real horror stories about, it was a district that had a huge family move in with a bunch of special ed kids. That district is out about $400,000 a year, and the special ed funding formula is not going to cover any of it. It's a very unique funding formula, and not one that's not very good for districts or kids. And then gifted and talented, we've got a 0.5 talent development coach and facilitator. And we will utilize state gifted and talented reserve revenue here, so that actually doesn't come out of our general fund. We've got a very large reserve of $130,000 or so in gifted and talented. And so we'll be using that reserve to fund this position. But right now, there's really not a lot of pull-out that's done. You know, gifted and talent is done in the classroom, and this person will be working with teachers as well as students to try to, you know, beef up our gifted and talented program.
At all grade levels?
It is primarily at the elementary, elementary and then some at the middle school.
So this is a totally new position then?
Yes. We actually used to have, we used to fund a
Mary Kay Prochek.
Mary Kay Prochek was a half-time gifted and talented person for a while, where we did pull-outs. That was probably five or six years ago, and we changed our model, but now we're feeling a need to give some more support to that, to those classroom teachers.
Right, we're still doing a cluster model where we got our kids are the high achievers or the talented ones in certain classrooms. So we mix them, but we're concentrating them in certain classrooms, so teachers can differentiate easier. But I just, talking to Mar, and there is some of the kids that really, you know, and teachers too, need that extra resource, need that teacher. So trying to do the best of both worlds type of thing. So we've been doing one, then we switched over, now we're trying to do both. So I really think it'll be, it'll be, I think this is our best plan yet. And we have the money and reserves, so we should use it.
And then buildings and grounds, at this point, we plan to add a 1.0 custodian effective the middle of August to service the middle school addition. Lots of new square feet over there to manage, and then we've got the pool here, and we don't plan to add here. So we've got to, you know, keep custodians here, even though we won't have the 1923 addition, or 1923 portion of the building, we will have a pool to support as well here in this building. So it's, we're adding square footage as a district, and we need custodians to be able to manage that.
I assume the custodian at the pool will come out of the CEC, or where's that custodian going to come from to help out?
Yeah, we're actually training five people to be pool, a pool operator. And so, right, it'll be out of the CEC.
Have they been trained already, or that's first coming up?
They're coming up. I don't know when the training is. Do you know when it is? Yeah, it's very soon.
Because they would have to be ready by the time the pool opens, is that?
I believe it's in May. I believe it's in May. Craig just talked about, I just didn't get the dates.
Yep, we're doing, five get training, including Craig too. So we have a backup to the backup to the back.
We're filling the pool up pretty soon, so we got to have, we have to have operators, so, yeah. So that is the staffing recommendations at this point, and you'll be, this will be a part of the budget, which you will see a month from tonight, four weeks from tonight. Any questions?
Yeah, and staffing, like I said, could change, even between now and then.
And we will let you know if that was the case. Okay, I don't have a lot of details on the next agenda item, but the archery tournament trip is attached there. Trying to just get advisors better at getting approval for these overnight trips, these traveling things, as well as the middle school DC trip for next year. So you can discuss those.
Talked about when the students went over in Costa Rica, that there had to be insurance coverage? There has to be extra insurance coverage here?
No, not within the United States.
And do we pay any of this for the trip?
No.
It's a club sport, so.
A club sport. Question?
And they're basically set to go already, right?
Yep, they're set to go.
Yeah.
Just more, you know, informing the board and getting a formal approval on that.
I mean, I think I read the attachments, and everything looks pretty good to me. They're just looking for approval. I'll make the motion we approve the archery team trip to the Nationals in Kentucky.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Same thing with the middle school trip, we went over that. I'll make a motion we approve the middle school trip to Washington DC for 2018.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Next, we have the Aquatic Center update.
Alright. I've asked Bryce to give an update where we're at with things with the Aquatic Center, so he'll give you a little presentation here, and then we'll open up for questions.
So I've been here about 10 weeks, and we've been doing a lot so far. We've got about 25 lifeguards and school instructors hired already. We've had a couple more applicants come in in the last week or two, so we'll interview those. Fitness instructors, we have one hired. We had one more application come in. Looking at setting up an interview with that person. But we'll be looking at hiring a couple more people for various classes that we want to offer. Swim and dive club, we are starting a swim and dive club, USA Swimming Club and a USA Diving Club team, open to kids ages six and up. It'll be a year-round club, so they have the option to swim year-round. They don't have to swim the full year. They can break it up into a couple sections. We've hired the head coach for the swim team and the head coach for the dive team, and we put out a press release. And we put out a press release, middle of last week or so, so that went into the paper. We'll be looking at hiring a couple more assistants for those two teams. For our software, for our memberships, we'll be selling memberships and those pricing will be set to come out here pretty soon. I'll touch that in a little bit. But we'll be, we'll be using Max Galaxy, Max Solutions out of Edina. So we started training, training with them. Last week, we had a training this afternoon, so we'll be set and ready to go for that. Our swim and dive team will be using Team Unify for that website. It'll be website and registration for the swim and dive team to handle the registrations, meet entries, anything kind of related to those swim and dive teams. I am hoping to get the membership pricing up, ready to go. We've had a couple of discussions with Max and had to adjust maybe a little bit in pricing. Not a whole lot after discussing with them, but we should have that ready to go within about the next week. Probably two weeks tops on finalizing that, that, the pricing for them, for the memberships. So we'll be selling them with Max Galaxy. And so we're still training on them with that software, but we should be up and ready to be able to sell those memberships the week of May fifteenth.
Bryce, when you're talking about memberships, you did look at other swimming pools in the area to determine how this was set, I assume, a little bit.
Yep, we took a wide range from just gyms, YMCA's, just pools. So we've kind of looked at what the area is doing and based it accordingly.
And is the Joint Powers Board setting helping at all with those, that pricing, or is that just?
Yes, it's been brought to the Joint Powers Board. It's been discussed there.
I've had a couple of discussions with Speedo, Tier, and Arena, kind of the three big swimsuit dealers. Looking at possibly some sponsorships with them. Some of them will do some cash, some of them will do donations, some of them will do equipment. And so I'm waiting to hear back from all three, but hoping we can kind of set up a partnership with one of those three. For the facility and our club team and possibly some lifeguard apparel, depending on what they have to offer. The Aqua Climb, the two climbing walls, we'll put two climbing walls into the pool, separated, apart in the deep end. And those have been purchased. Those are ready to go in. And we're also looking at getting some wibbets. It's like an inflatable obstacle course that'll go twenty-five, roughly twenty-five yards in the deep end, and then one big kind of action tower. Jump off, climb up kind of thing. And then possibly a key log, like a lumberjack log roll and some inflatable fit mats. But those other items need approval from the health department before we put them in. So I'm waiting to get the official okay before those get purchased.
And all these things he's talking about too are, this is money that the city has put in. So it came out of their contribution. So I just want to make sure that's clear. And obviously, the climbing walls too are, you can take them off, right?
Correct.
It's not like they stay in there or anything, but. Okay.
Birthday parties, we're working on finalizing that price. We'll offer a set price and then we'll give the families an option to add on maybe pizza or cupcakes, cakes. Other options if they, if they want us have kind of like a one stop shop for their birthday parties. They would, some of those places would be able to deliver the day of. Otherwise, we could store some of them in the freezer, fridges in the concession stand that we'll have. So that should be available here shortly as well. As far as scheduling goes, I'm working on the scheduling matrix for the summer for the pools. And hope to have that ready the week of the May fifteenth. All of the rental arrangements, we're gonna follow the standard district policy.
So those will be online submittals, like they're updating the rest of the facilities too?
Some of them probably will be, depending on what they're looking at renting.
Bryce, I was gonna ask, I know some pools have done like a water safety day where they, it's like a class and then they'll, they'll come in and they teach all the basics about water safety, you know, lake safety, boat, all that, anything that has to do with water. Just didn't know if that was on the agenda. Maybe it's too quick, too soon for summer. I mean, it's so fast approaching. So I didn't know if that's something that you guys have talked about or looked into.
We'll probably do something like that. I just don't know if it'll be one day or how that'll, that'll shape out, but.
Or even incorporate in the swimming lessons. I know sometimes, it used to do it in your project, like the one day would be designated for that, or they have their clothes in the water. I don't know if that's.
And we might do a one day session of safety in the swim lessons, or they might just break it up into each set, each day. There might be, you know, five minutes.
Yeah, right, okay.
Rather than a whole day, but we still have to figure that out a little bit.
Sure, sure.
Do you have lifeguard classes scheduled?
We don't have any scheduled yet. We can't host them without any water. So, um, once we get that kind of finalized, we'll be able to host those.
And, and when will you be, so you're anticipating May fifteenth, having a proposed matrix out? And is that when people can start scheduling birthday parties or? It's, you know, everyone's like, when can we use it? When can we do this?
That's a good question.
So as far as birthday parties go, we'll probably book them in about two hour time blocks. Most of those will be on Saturday and Sunday mid afternoons. And so we'll have that kind of set up a little bit ahead of time, those time blocks. And so right around between the next week and the May fifteenth, we should have that up and able to schedule.
And that would be, they could swim, do whatever. The pool would be open for other people, but they'd be reserving the room and then kind of open swim time?
So they would get two hours of the, the pool room, wet classroom, and then ten passes to the pool. And then any of those additional add-ons.
Would they get a certain number of lanes or one or two lanes if they come in, say with twenty people or? How, how does that, would they rent two lanes at once? Or how, how would they determine how many lanes they can rent? Or is it just open? They can use any lane?
For birthday parties?
Yes.
It would just be open?
It'd be, okay.
Would there be a lifeguard in that area where the party is?
Yes.
Okay. And I know some places actually assess the kids. I mean, the younger ones, like if they were in first grade, they would have to have an assessment, I mean, a brief one. Is that something that would be done at the birthday parties? You know what I mean? Like, just to kind of get an idea.
It will be. We're looking at the pool rules and finalizing those too. Certain ages may require an adult or parent or guardian in the water. Life jackets may have a parent or guardian in the water. And then depending on the amenities we have up, they may have to do a swim test to go on those. So that would be.
You know, because I just remember for years, we went to the wilderness and they had no lifeguards after an accident. That place is lifeguard city. I mean, you cannot go there without seeing a lifeguard. So I just, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, depending on what we have scheduled, we could have anywhere from two to six.
Okay.
Or more on, depending on what's going on in the pool.
What do you anticipate for lap swim? You know, there's been some discussion of having a couple lanes open either when other things are going on and, and, you know, dedicated lap time at whatever, five thirty or six in the morning and some other time.
So with the way the pool is structured, we'll have that, that bulkhead in there kind of set for eighty to ninety percent of the time. So we'll swim from the shallow end to the bulkhead and then the diving well will be separate. So in the diving well, we're gonna stripe, we're not gonna stripe the bottom, but there's gonna be two lane light, two or three lanes going the widthwise of the pool. So it'll be sixty-one feet across. So it's not quite a full twenty-five yards. But we'll have that open. Or at least one to two lanes in the big competition pool. The, the plan would be to do as much as possible to keep open, one lane to two lanes at all times.
And would groups be able to just reserve a couple lanes? For whatever reason, if someone just wants to, to swim laps and they want to know they'll have a dedicated availability for that or?
They could. We would just look at what our availability is and then go down the school district policy for reserving.
Well, ba- basically, around May fifteenth, you think, or shortly thereafter, people can start reserving?
I would say right around there. Yeah.
Thank you for all the information.
Welcome.
A lot of work. Can't wait to see that matrix.
Are you gonna jump in first after the water's in?
Him should.
Who gets to?
Yeah.
Is there gonna be a ribbon cutting in the water?
I want to see Jerry on the yoga mat.
Wait, what do we do fundraiser for?
It'll be pretty chilly.
What will, what will the temperature of the pool be kept at, generally speaking?
So the recreational pool will probably be right around eighty-six. And then the main competition pool, the, for, for competitions, it has to be between seventy-eight and eighty-two. So somewhere in that range is probably where it would keep, where we would keep it.
Would you warm it up some in the summer when there's lessons and not? If there, if there weren't going to be competitions during that time?
We could look at that. With us starting a swim club, we could host meets year round. So if it makes sense, maybe we could. One, one or two degrees you can kind of feel. So there's a difference between seventy-eight and eighty and eighty and eighty-two.
Other questions? Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Bryce.
I think that's it. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Denny had to go pick up his grandchild, so.